For all the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order.
I'll call the Fremont School Board meeting to order.
And for the play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Well, because tonight's a joint meeting, we're going to call attendance.
Here.
We'll call vote.
Praise you.
And then cheer.
Pellegrini here, Powers here.
All right. And Calucci is not here.
Glad to wait. Usually she goes first.
Yeah.
All right. Rick.
Rick is here.
Great. Jeremiah.
Jeremiah is also.
Ken is here.
Maura.
Here.
Micah.
Here.
And myself here. All right, so we will start with the high school presentation. Jen has the first month update with October 1st enrollments, so I'm going to move because I can't see it.
All right.
Yeah, oh, there you go.
It's great.
I feel like it's better to, yeah.
All right, I borrowed. Okay, so I put together a little presentation here that has the bullet points on the agenda all covered. So thank you for having me. I'm Jen Mitchinson. I'm the principal at Sanborn Regional High School. So some of the topics tonight that I'm going to talk to you about is our, just a first month update. It's actually been a little over a month. Our October 1st enrollment numbers, some of our course offerings, clubs and organizations, athletics, and how we're doing at school with cell phones. So here are some pictures that represent sort of a bunch of different things that we've done so far, but really only touched the surface. It's been a little over a month since school started. It feels like it's been, I don't know, I feel like we're way further along. I don't think it's because anything's, you know, not going well. I think because we've done so much. We've already had homecoming. We've had, you know, so the dance, we've done a lot of athletic activities. So it just really feels like usually homecoming isn't for another week. So it just really feels like we're already really settled into the school year, which is nice. So and one of the new events that our seniors wanted to do this year, the picture down in the lower left is they wanted to do a little senior sunrise. So it was really nice, a group of the seniors, you know, it was an optional activity. They decided that they wanted to come in and watch the sunrise on, I think, the first Friday of the school year is when, when they did that. So it was really cute and they had a lot of fun doing that. And then some bass fishing photos, we'll talk about that a little more during athletics. A picture from the dance, the homecoming float that won. And then the picture with Rebecca is from our pep rally. So there are some fun pep rally pictures if you've seen them on the website. So our October 1st enrollments, so you can see it's broken down by town and then by grade level with the grand totals all the way at the bottom. And if you want to look, you know, the total enrollments per grade. And so we have 142 right now in our senior class. We have 126 in our juniors, 123 in our sophomores, and 133 in our freshman class with a total of 524. And we also have, you can see that other column are maybe a couple of students from a different town that attend Sanborn for various reasons, whatever they may be. So we do have two students who are from out of our towns. And then, of course, you can see 211 total students from Kingston, 152 from Newton, and 159 from Fremont. Oh, and also I'll be posting this after, I'll send this to Phyllis afterwards. So just like last year, you can find this, it'll be up on our website. And I can send it to Ellen, too. So course offerings, I broke it down similarly last year. I didn't list every single course on this slide, but I sort of just gave an overview. There's 11 different courses students can sign up for in art, 16 different business and/or technology, industrial tech, which is our like woodworking and in the shop area. It caught, we have CAD, we have small engine repair. There are 16 different English courses, including, you know, AP literature. We have running start through Great Bay Community College. My new favorite English class this year is the English teachers got together and realized they wanted to create an English class that was real world applicable for our kiddos who may be going right out of school to the trades to pursue, you know, an internship or an apprenticeship. So they have this English class this year called English for Trades and Industry, which has been really good. Mr. Cass is teaching a section of that this semester and Mr. Kelly's actually team, teaming up with him to do some real world, you know, writing tasks that are applicable for those types of fields. And so far, so good. They did a field trip last week for the construction day, which was a big success. So just a little, you know, neat kind of course that the teachers recognized that there was a need for. And it's been so good, so far, so good. We have 17 different math courses offered, five different types of music courses, seven different options in the PE Health and Wellness, 15 different science courses, nine social studies, and including we're going to hopefully get back to running the election course, which runs during election years. So that's a really great opportunity, again, a real world applicable types of tasks that students do in, you know, relation to the election. Donna Harvey has usually historically been the teacher for that. So just again, something exciting to look forward to in, in our course offerings. And then we have 12 different world language courses, including a world culture through virtual travel and a, another, a cooking class that is specific to world cultures, which is really, really neat. I put a link up here to the course offerings. You can look at our current program of studies, this will be clickable, you can click on it. And then we will be doing our program of studies work shortly in the upcoming weeks. We'll get together with our teachers and PLC teams and they'll be going through and, you know, we'll be reflecting on, on our course offerings and making some adjustments to that. We also have the Seacoast School of Technology courses. So this year we have 66 students. They take two periods a day over at SST. We have a great partnership with Northern Essex Community College and we have 36 students are currently taking 68 classes over there. And, you know, the great part for this opportunity as opposed to just a dual enrollment course where, okay, you can get credit through SNU or Great Bay, the students go to NECC. So they actually get to go to the college campus to take the courses there with the college teachers. And it's a whole program with other high school students in the area that also are able to get over. We're very fortunate that it's so in close proximity and our students can actually go there to take the classes. And then we have 72 students currently taking at least one period of an ELO, an Extended Learning Opportunity, or they're doing an internship, and that's just during semester one. So by the end of the year, I anticipate that number to be probably well over 120 students that would have at some point during the year taken an ELO or an internship for high school credit. Clubs and organizations, I am going to click on this link. So this is on our website. And if you click here, this is your guide to all of the clubs and activities that we offer. It also, I linked in our, our calendar of events up here. It gives you all the class advisors, and if you click on their names, it'll take you right to an email address. It lists out all of our athletics. And then down below here is a chart of all the different clubs we offer, a little blurb about each club, some links for some of them, and then it gives you the teacher who runs those clubs and an email address. So you can reach out to the clubs and organization teachers. If, you know, the students want more information or you as a parent want to ask any questions. So it's a pretty comprehensive list and we try to keep it as up to date from year to year as we have new opportunities of clubs. Sorry. Okay, this is fine. And so here's some pictures that I included, a couple from this year and then from previous years. So here's the Sanborn Submariners team, and they've expanded tremendously this year and are really excited about the future work for the project. And then there is the Key Club. They really do an amazing job with our food pantry. They help Miss Levitt with the 68 Hours of Hunger. And then see this little guy down here, this little lobster. We actually have a student who is doing an ELO for marine science, sort of doing her own independent study with a teacher, with a biology teacher, and they have a saltwater life tank up in one of the science rooms. So that is really in our school right now. You can go check it out. And then the growing plants, that's the tower gardens. We've had those for a number of years and the cafeteria actually uses the produce that come from the tower gardens in the salads. And Kara, who is our previous manager there, she has said over the years how wonderful it is to have, especially with the cost of food being what it's been lately and, you know, getting the fresh produce and her having to watch, you know, what she has on hand, it's been a great addition for her. And then, of course, the school store. And if you haven't seen it, it's really awesome. It's over in the atrium area right across from the main entrance. So athletics, we have eight high school teams that compete in the NHIAA sports. We have a club team currently volleyball and they're actually playing a game this year. We were able to get them set up and we're hoping to continue growing that program. We currently have 168 student athletes for the fall season, which is a fantastic turnout. Cross country won the Hollis Invitational, we have a really strong cross country team this year. And the bass fishing caught the most fish they've caught in five years. I think before that their number was zero or maybe one, but they did a great job. They actually caught some fish this year. I hear it was a good fishing season up that way. They, they participated in the tournament back on September 21st. It was up on Lake One of Pisaki, so Mr. Gray was the captain and coach. So they had a great time and it was, it was a good experience. So you can see the numbers broken down by sport, how many participants that we have. Again, this is just for the fall season, so hopefully winter's really just around the corner. It sounds crazy, but before you know it, I already saw Dr. Dawson added his advertisement for winter sports for me to put in the newsletter for this Sunday, so we're already thinking about next season. And here's some really great shots with some of our sporting events. All right, finally. So with our student use of privately owned electronic devices at school policy, last year, we, was the first year we had the policy and, you know, students weren't allowed to use their phones. And we started off with saying, you know, teachers, please enforce this and, you know, wanted to give them some autonomy and some discretion. And what we found, actually with some questions that we asked the staff, at the end of the year, I did a pretty comprehensive feedback survey that I asked my staff. And one of the alarming, not alarming, the very like stood out to me pieces of feedback they got is they wanted something more than just, oh, tell kids to put their phones away. They wanted us to really tell them how to, how to help manage it. So this year we had a lot of these pouches already. They had been purchased, I think, pre-COVID, when the phones started to become a problem in classrooms. And then, of course, COVID happened, so there were no problems, right? Just kidding. And then, so now we're realizing, okay, no, we need to address the phone use. And so every classroom has a pocket, there's actually even one in the library. They're either all hung up on the wall or the teacher keeps it on a flat surface. We're in the process of having facilities help us get the rest of them hung up. And some teachers, you know, ha, a kid knows what number they are, were assigned that day one, or the kids simply just know you need to go put the phone in the pouch and it's just becoming habit. And so now the feedback we're getting from staff is the kids just know and it's consistent in every class. So there's no arguing, there's no, well, this teacher lets me do it and this one doesn't. It's really just been really consistent and it's helping a lot. And it's nice to go into classrooms and to see kids really engaged in the work and really not distracted and not, you know, thinking about other things. Miss Ally was doing a project, her kids were making some crafts. There were, you know, some kids in there doing ELOs for elementary and they were kind of playing around. Well, what would be, what could I do with it for a craft for this age group? And so they were actually like practicing making their crafts, following directions that they would want to, you know, give in a classroom. And it was nice, they, nobody was on their phones. They were just not, it's nice, it's really nice. So, and again, so every classroom teacher utilizes the phones. Students are not permitted to bring their phones to the bathrooms during class, so that's also part of it. So once the phone goes in that pocket, that's that. So no more of this texting, hey, let's meet up here and who know, we're just eliminating some of those issues. Phones can be used between classes, so they're still here, we still have them. There've still been a couple, you know, things, but it is minimal compared to last year and certainly the year before that. And students can use their phones in the cafeteria during lunchtime and they do. You know, that's kind of their time, their downtime, and it's been nice and so far it's worked. So, right. And that is the end of my presentation for tonight.
Thank you. You're welcome. Right. Right. Not everybody jump pop all at once. Nope. And I guess, were there any questions that you guys have? Jen? No, very nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Presentation.
Thank you.
Very informative.
And Jen, if you send that to me, I'll forward it. Yeah, yep, I will send it. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
Another meeting.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, feel free to grab some pizza on the way up.
Told them.
Press my arm.
I said, grab some. Yes.
Sorry, we don't have any.
Are these, these are not hard.
You guys have fun.
All right. Guys, enjoy yours.
I'll try.
Bye, Ellen. Didn't even get to see you much. Have a good night. Bye, Gordon.
Because like, people want to move.
Do I get to move off of the table?
Yes, if you want to move. Just take your name tag.
It's going to be that.
Yeah. Feel free to move.
All right.
Make it a little easy.
It's not you.
Motion to move into non-public. We don't need to do that one.
Yeah, we're not.
No. We have another one coming after us. That was, that was in case.
Can make a motion for Tom to move his seat.
Feel like I'm Rodney Dangerfield someday.
No, I'm good. You have the whole scene.
I'm okay.
Yeah, it smells better.
That's better. That's better. So now.
We are festive at times.
So we are at eight, yes. So action on the minutes. Number 20th, 20th. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Everybody's here in person, so all in favor?
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, all right, unanimous. All right.
For you.
Okay, manifest documents are going on. Um, combinations.
Yes, I have two, let me just. I just wanted to nominate Gaye Dable for the Baky School, part-time reading specialist. And Gillian Spiro is coming back to Sanborn as a part-time teacher. Really excited to welcome her back. She's working on her master's degree. And we had a sudden opening. And so Ms. Mitchinson reached out to her and she was super happy to come back part-time, so we're glad to have her back.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm actually going to keep this relatively brief this evening, though, because I'm going to talk about the, the enrollments coming up in the agenda. But I just wanted to say that we are still off to a great start. I did talk with some students recently about the cell phone policy and they've told me that the learning environment is much, much better. Having more consistency. It doesn't mean that it's always fun, because sometimes when they're done their assignments, it's annoying that they can't look at their phone when they're done their work. But they, it has been a very positive change, so I'm glad that Principal Mitchinson shared that. I also wanted to mention that the homecoming was super fun and we've had a great start to the year. So that's really all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right. Subcommittee reports, does anyone have anything to report, Rick?
Brief. So this is minutes from the facilities committee. In attendance, myself, Jeremiah, Matt, and Ken was accused. So we covered the approval of the minutes. We talked about the update on the auditorium, the conservation easement, fire system repairs, middle school, high school freshwater tank. Then we got into some specifics at the DJ Baky Elementary, things that are going to need repair or replacement. Freezer failed, so we're going to have to discuss that. Duck work for rooftop unit insulation needs to be replaced. Loading dock cement needs attention. Cafeteria roof needs coat of tar. Abandoned chimney needs to be capped off or repaired. Back parking lot needs pavement patch and puddle at the front entrance. Needs some drywall to absorb water. Memorial, work that needs to be done, septic tanks or addressed, septic tanks near potholes and a process of having floats replaced. There's a roof leak, we've taken several quotes for replacement or some, some overlay. Still looking at, you know, what we're going to do there. High school and middle school. We still have some leaks increasing on the roof, but we're looking at some opera, I guess, opportunities for warranties, see what's left on that. The loading dock step failed in the back and there's some chimney work that needs to be done here as well. At the old middle school, the roof of the kitchen's going to need replacement boilers. We're going to have to look at replacing them at some point in the near future. And we talked about some parking lot improvements. An old item we discussed is the LED light discussion. We're going to talk about that in our next meeting and we'll bring some suggestions and recommendations to the board on that. We talked about some flooring for the memorial portables and potentially getting some volunteers within the communities to assist with that. And then the next meeting is October 18th at 4:00 PM.
I'll go, because mine's quick.
Yep.
Um, the personnel committee met today, 15. Um, we reviewed the minutes and attendance with Heather, Ken, myself, and Diana Rooney. And we went into non-public to discuss staff retention. And that was pretty much it. And our next meeting is November 1st, 2023 at 5:15. All right, um, anyone else? All right, so excellence in student achievement met on the 20th of December. In attendance were myself, Ms. Bashaw, Ingham, Christine DeRocher, Jan Mitchinson, Matt Malila, and our high school math teacher, who is also the PLC leader, the freshman Solomon. We reviewed our minutes and accepted those. And then we had a discussion on the math books, the nine through 12 math books, because they're having issues with them staying in decent condition. So we were able to go into non-public and actually go into, we had permission from the parent go into a student account and see exactly what the students have access to through the online portal. And they literally have a book available to them online. It's the exact same thing, page for page. So we're going to work on having students use that at home and have the actual physical copies in the classroom. And we encouraged her to go back and ask the teachers to start using the books in the classroom to kind of get kids off of screens a little bit. So instead of accessing that stuff, you know, through the portal, they would use the book in the classrooms. They actually have that, you know, kind of, you know, paper feel and, and, you know, get their, get their eyes away from the screens for a little bit and utilize the books that we've already purchased. There was also discussion about when the online access is only good for so long, because we only, you know, you only purchase it for a certain amount of time. So we talked about they're going to look into, how to extend it, you know, what costs are to extend it, what the costs are for new books for the classroom, because again, at some point they're going to make updates to the books. So the books in the classrooms may not match the portal anymore. So a lot of, they're going to do some research for us on a lot of that, getting all the fine details. determine the best course of action so that when this subscription runs out, the online subscription runs out, we know what our next step is and what we're going to do about textbooks as well. Then we went into a discussion about middle school, Algebra I, Accelerated Data and Placement. So Mr. Rocher gave us a bunch of information. Mr. Malila reviewed the feedback from the math teachers, highlighting their specific questions of what the purpose or philosophy is for it. They wanted to know, is it a focus on gifted students or to encourage more students to choose more talent? So, you know, we talked about approaches and the best criteria for measuring student progress, providing a foundation of what markers and data points best show parents' student status and what they're learning. Talked about course requirements and how they affect a student's trajectory as well as teacher feedback and expectation. So it was at that point, that was really more just a kind of a conversation. We haven't really kind of come to any determination on, on anything yet, but it was a really great conversation. I felt, felt like we had a really great conversation about that. So Mr. Malila was bringing that back to the teachers and then they're going to bring it back to us with some potential modifications. So hopefully at some point we can get that moved here to us and we can all take a look at it and move it forward. And then everything else unfortunately had to get tabled because we had a huge agenda and it was very, very in-depth conversations, so that was all we got through. All right, there are no others. Rebecca, oh, yep, sorry, did you have one?
I will, I'll actually jump in just because it's short and there's a timely item here, so I thought.
Absolutely.
To talk about that.
Perfect, thank you, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So the Public Relations Subcommittee met this evening.
Okay.
Prior to the board meeting. And the first discussion topic that we talked about was coffee carts during the Professional Development Day and the breakfast yogurt parfait continental, continental yogurt parfait line, I think is what we're calling. Is being offered.
The Hawaiian theme.
With a Hawaiian theme, sure. No, not with a Hawaiian theme.
No, it's going to be a fall theme.
A fall theme. So that is happening this Friday, why I wanted to do this readout.
Yep.
And Mr. Ambrose has invited obviously board members to participate in that. And I think we already have a pretty good showing in different times throughout the morning and the day there. So that'll be great. There'll be donuts from, I believe it's referred to as the best donut.
Oh, yes.
Location, okay. So that's, that's good. And then we went into a non-public to discuss three active negotiations, teachers contract, Fremont and budget. Those three items. And then we, next meeting is the first meeting in November, board meeting, and we are.
Great.
And just a point, like, I believe we always welcome the parents to come for the PTO day and show appreciation to teachers.
Yes, yes, the PTO folks have been involved. Yep, yep, thank you.
Rebecca.
So as Mr. Ambrose said, homecoming was a big success. I didn't personally go to the parade, but I heard from a lot of people that they were really happy that it was brought back. And then we also had the football game and it did rain a little, but it went really well. And then we also had the football game and it did rain a little, but it went really well. Sanborn won and it didn't rain too much. The band was still able to play at the football game and we had the dance at night and I went and that was really fun time. Um we also have two high school students who are additioning for a statewide jazz all-state where only sixteen sopranos are selected. So um we're hoping that they get in and the football team was able to go to UMass Amherst to watch a D-one team play and they were given a tour of the facilities and sideline passes, so it was just a good experience for them to see um such a great college team play.
Could I add one more point?
Yeah.
I just have to say that that parade was really fun and I got to ride in the fire. Born.
Yeah, a little.
Except I didn't know that the siren part is on the floor of the fire truck. So the guy driving it said, you might want to lay off the siren. I'm like, I'm doing that. So it turns out that the siren is not a button on the floor. It's actually a rocker pedal and it's in the front of the fire engine. I'm blaring the siren, not knowing.
Blaring the siren.
Yeah, by dawn. But we, it was a really fun time and the kids were great. The uh, the the seniors had a a a Roman. Is that the best way to put it?
Yeah, it was like ancient.
Ancient Greece. And it blew over in the drive, so they called it post Roman ancient Greece, you know, so it's all like broken and fallen, fall down and I mean, it was great. And the, and the kids that won had a real vol- the volcano had.
Class of twenty twenty-six soccer class.
It was awesome. They they just, everyone had so much fun. So it was a nice weekend and I mean, and I know that football was awesome, but soccer was also great. So the 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 girls and boys soccer played really hard and although, although they didn't win, they did a great job. So it was really fun.
The other fun point was, um what was the technical theme? Was it eras or?
Um, yeah, it was eras.
Eras, yeah, so um Jen, um actually, I think it was Ms. Harvey.
Yep.
Um connected with past administrators and staff and had them come back to judge the floats. So that was really cool. So it was, it was era, so it was previous administrators came back. So Mr. Stack came back, Ms. Russell, Rutherford came back, Mr. Rutherford came back. Uh and there were a few others.
Johnson, I think.
Yep, there were a few others. So it was really neat. Um.
Yeah, that's cool.
That 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 little touch was put in there. So there were a lot of really great things.
Yeah, it was a fun weekend for sure. Yep.
So, all right. Thank you, Rebecca. All right, uh so on to Tom, October first district enrollment.
Thank you. Um. So the, the simple point with the enrollments is that we're down this year by approximately fifty students. Uh I think technically fifty-one students. Um, we have uh one thousand three hundred and fifty-one students as of our October first enrollments. Uh no- notable points to be looking for when we have the budget conversation is that uh we, what we do is we take these numbers and we roll them forward for next year to make projections for what each school will have for numbers for the next year. So the first thing that we do is we say, okay, there are a hundred and one students in first grade. That means there'll probably be pretty much a hundred and one students in second grade. And then we figure out the number of teachers that we need for a hundred and one students in second grade. Make sure that's settled. Everything is built from the students up. Right? So we start with the students and the programs and that's how we develop the budget. So I think that um the the notable things to take a look at in the right column are that currently for kindergarten, we have eighty-four students. Typically, we do get some students that went to private kindergarten and then come to first grade, so that could swing quite a bit between K and first grade. So we'll be watching those numbers closely as as students enroll for next year. Another group to notice is um that, so for example, there's a hundred and five in second grade that will move up to third grade at Memorial. And there's seventy-four in third grade. That means we'll probably move a fourth grade teacher down to third grade to help. It doesn't mean that we always hire more staff. It just means that we reallocate and move people within the building to cover the the changes in different class sizes. Um, the biggest, most notable thing that we have to talk about in the budget process is the fact that the sixty-seven students, we have a a an anomaly in the numbers with the um eighth grade and another one sort of in the third grade of seventy-four. Um sixty-seven students in the eighth grade means that the freshman class next year will be incredibly small, a hundred students or a little more.
And out of.
Yeah.
And out of, you know, freshman classes, how many kids tend to go to private school? So out of that sixty-seven.
It varies from year to year, but my original analysis showed about maybe two, three.
So not like a huge, no.
No. No, it's, it and 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 again, Fremont typically sends us roughly, um if you look at the numbers, forty-two, thirty, forty-two, forty-five, so if they send us forty students, they'll be closer to a hundred and ten.
Mm-hmm.
When they become freshmen. So I just wanted people to understand why it goes from sixty-seven to one thirty-three to one twenty-three. You can see the senior class is one of the last bigger senior classes that we have. And then the class sizes, if you added forty students to the the next years, fall more in that one twenty to one thirty range. So it's just important to note that we're going to have to figure out our our resources and allocations. The other thing is the Baky School is getting, it's it's large. The Baky School has a lot of students in it right now. Um if you look at the number, it's over three hundred students and it's important to remember kindergarten kids are a lot more work to get settled and ready for school than a freshman. Right? They can never be alone. They can never do anything independently. They've never been in school except for maybe pre-K. It's a whole different ballgame. I I don't, for those of you who don't know, my, my past, I was a K-two principal for five years. And I've also been a high school guidance counselor and I have to say that there is no level of stress that compares to getting kindergarten kids settled in school and comfortable and working. And our kindergarten teachers are amazing. I spend a lot of time there regularly and I really enjoy working with them. But we may need to move some resources from the upper levels to the K-two level to support them because they do need some help there. So there'll be more to come about that. That's just a little budget preview. So that's all I had. I just uh thought it'd be important to share the numbers because it's October. And um just remember our our subsidy from the state is based on these numbers as well. So. Have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. No old business, uh second public comment. All right, uh next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty.
That's the twenty-two.
Twenty-three. At six P M. in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Uh the next Budget Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, October twelfth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Uh would someone like to take us into non-public?
I move us into non-public RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three, Roman numeral two, C K.
There a second?
Second.
Great, all right, um roll call in, Rick.
Yes.
Jeremiah.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Micah.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes. And myself, yes. All right, a quick five-minute break.